Ay, niara. Akinikay uli, apat, pasnikayo, ne? Si Kabanlas. Okay. Okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's settle down. The 51st regular station of the 20th City Council. Again, the Oro City will please come to order. May I invite everyone to stand for the invocation to be led by the Honorable Yan Lam Lim.
Good afternoon, Presiding Officer. Honorable Romeo Calizo, at mga kauban sa 20th City Council, at mga visitas lasgari. Let's bow our head and let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for his wonderful day you have given us to gather here today to celebrate your goodness and love for each one of us. We thank you for the continuously giving us wisdom for us to be able to be of service to our fellow Cagayanos, giving and providing them all the necessary needs and services. We continue to ask for your guidance and protection, especially that we are celebrating the feast of Senior San Gustin. May our month-long fiesta celebration of the city will end up successfully, safe and enjoyable. All glory and praise to you, Lord. Amen.
Let us remain standing for the singing of our national anthem to be followed by the Cagayan de Oro March. Tang Pilipinas.
Thank you very much. And again, good afternoon to everyone. Good afternoon to the members of the 20th City Council, our guests, and also those who are monitoring our session via this social media platform. Again, to everyone, good afternoon. Mr. Secretary, can you do the roll call?
Honorable Jocelyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor, on official business for the First District Councilors. Honorable Agapito Ereberto Giswan. Honorable Roger G. Abadai. Honorable JR Pasqual. Honorable Aimy Rose P. Moreno. Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Presiding Officer Potempore. Honorable George S. Go King, on official business. Honorable Jose Pepe S. Abu Junior. Honorable Malvern E. Espasia. For the Second District Councilors. Honorable Ivona Yasin B. Imano. Honorable Maria Lodes Esgaani. Honorable Jalen Mercedes El Balaba. Honorable James K. Jureth II. Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya. Honorable Edgar S. Kabanlas. Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atas. Honorable Josette G. Magtahas Daba. For the ex-official members. Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Liga ng mga Barangay President. And Honorable John Michael Elsano, City Escape Federation President. There is coram, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary. There being a coram, we will proceed. The majority floor leader, the Honorable Edgar Kabanlas, is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officer, Councilor Romeo Calizo. Members of the City Council, guests that we have this afternoon, people from the media and our residents of Cagayan Oro who are watching us in the respective social platforms. Good afternoon again. May I move, Mr. Chairman, to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous regular session of this council and consider the furnishing thereof as reading itself.
Move for dispensation, any second. Move, seconded, approved.
Move to approve, said minutes.
Any second. So, seconded, approved.
We have no special report. Nobody signified during that special report. Yes, we don't want to disturb the festive mood of the fiesta with a special report. But, Mr. Chairman, we have visitors. We have dear visitors from the city of Cagayan Oro who made names in another country as Taekwondo players or fighters. Taekwondo main gym, Cagayan Oro City Medalist of the 8th Day Jun MBC Cup International Open Taekwondo Championships held in Chungnam, South Korea last August 11 to 16, 2023. Getting 12 gold medals, 11 silver, and 10 bronze. May I request our secretary to read the names of these victorious Cagayanos? And can we have the head instructor, Vincent Arcurales?
Ah, okay, the mother is a Voluntari.
So, may I request the Honorable Chairman to suspend the rules?
Move for suspension of rules, any second. Move and seconded, rules suspended. As I called your name, please come forward.
Gold medalist for the sparring, Samrick Carl Bakolio. Aliza Naomi Kirill. Luther Oban III. El Ricky Venzo Arcales. Andrea Zui Arcales. Silver medalist for sparring, Frances Adele Kirill. Lara May Oban and Andrew Reynier Cinco. Bronze medalist for sparring, we have Marjorie Bakal. Christian Daniel Janos. For the Pumse event, for the pair Pumse bronze medalist Lorenzo Jos Arcales and El Ricky Venzo Arcales. For the team Pumse bronze medalist, Christian Daniel Janos, Lara May Oban, Aliza Naomi Kirill, Lorenzo Jos Arcales, Marjorie Bakal, and El Ricky Venzo Arcales. Other gold medalists are Andrew Reynier Cinco, Christian Daniel Janos, Rayaris Zui Arcales. Other silver medalists are Marjorie Bakal, Frances Adele Kirill, and El Rico Venzo Arcales. Their head instructor of the Taekwondo main gym, Cagayan Oro City, is Mr. Vincent Arcales.
Okay, so a resolution of congratulation would be a fitting tribute to this victorious team, Mr. Chairman, at the proper time?
Okay, so at the proper time, it's moved. That inappropriate resolution be passed.
We will pass a resolution congratulating these kids. So, we have the photo ops. And... Okay, can we have a few minutes recess for any demonstration? You will know.
They are elaborators, but they enter all the categories in 21 times.
Move for suspension of rules, any second. Move and seconded, rules suspended.
As I called your name, please come forward. Gold medalist for the sparring, Samrick Carl Bakolio. Aliza Naomi Kirill. Luther Oban III. El Ricky Venzo Arcales. Andrea Zui Arcales. Silver medalist for sparring, Frances Adele Kirill. Lara May Oban and Andrew Reynier Cinco. Bronze medalist for sparring, we have Marjorie Bakal. Christian Daniel Janos. For the Pumse event, for the pair Pumse bronze medalist Lorenzo Jos Arcales and El Ricky Venzo Arcales. For the team Pumse bronze medalist, Christian Daniel Janos, Lara May Oban, Aliza Naomi Kirill, Lorenzo Jos Arcales, Marjorie Bakal, and El Ricky Venzo Arcales. Other gold medalists are Andrew Reynier Cinco, Christian Daniel Janos, Rayaris Zui Arcales. Other silver medalists are Marjorie Bakal, Frances Adele Kirill, and El Rico Venzo Arcales. Their head instructor of the Taekwondo main gym, Cagayan Oro City is Mr. Vincent Arcales.
Okay, so a resolution of congratulation would be a fitting tribute to this victorious team, Mr. Chairman, at the proper time?
Okay, so at the proper time, it's moved. That inappropriate resolution be passed.
We will pass a resolution congratulating these kids. So, we have the photo ops. And... Okay, can we have a few minutes recess for any demonstration?
They are elaborators, but they enter all the categories in 21 times.
It was a beautiful demonstration. This is Taekwondo, Mr. Chairman. Taekwondo. But karate do is Roger Abadai.
So, we have, this is Taekwondo.
Taekwondo, Korean.
Korean. Karate is?
Japan.
Japan. So, ladies and gentlemen, this team came all the way from Korea to represent the Philippines. Congratulations. So, can we invite the members of the council to... so that we have, we can take pictures with the team?
So, may move to lift the order of suspension.
So, session resumes. And there's a motion for the lifting of the suspension of the rules. Any second? Seconded? Session resumes.
So now, we proceed with our business relay. Mr. Chairman, item number one. Proposal solution number 2023-480, returning to barangay council of barangay 28, the city its ordinance 23-01, series of 2023 covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 3,479,812 pesos with information that its ordinance is operative in its entirety. May I request Councilor Alan Lim to be recognized?
Councilor Alan Lim is recognized.
Yes, everything is in order. I move to approve the proposed resolution number 2023-480.
Any second? Any objection? There being none. Resolution number 2023-480 is hereby approved.
Move to approve on second and final reading?
Second? Any seconded, approved.
Item number two. Returning to proposal solution number 2023-481, returning to the Sangunian Kabataan ng Barangay in Dahak, the city, its resolution number 17, series of 2023, covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 1,988,119 pesos with information that its resolution is operative in its entirety. May I request Councilor Elsano be recognized? Uh, Councilor Roger Abadai?
Councilor Roger Abadai is recognized.
I move for the approval of proposal, proposed resolution number 2023-481.
Any second? Objection? None? Resolution number 2023-481 is hereby approved.
Move to approve on second and final reading?
Any second? Approved.
Number three. Proposal solution number 2023-482, accrediting the Alpha Theta Phi Varicetarian Grand Faternity and Serenity for purposes of its membership in the local special bodies pursuant to DILG circular number 2023-03 and Article 64 Rule 13 of the Rules and Regulations implementing the 1991 Local Government Code of funding its project from the city or other sources as required under the COA circular pertinent thereto. May I request Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya be recognized, Mr. Chairman?
Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya is recognized.
Move for its approval, Mr. Presiding Officer?
Any second? Objection? None? Approved.
Move to approve on second and final reading?
Second? Seconded, approved.
Number four. Proposal solution 2023-483 congratulating, commending Mr. Joseph O. Arauaro of barangay Patag, the city for winning the first prize award of their representational painting category in the 2023 GSIS Painting Competition held in Pasay City on June 16, 2023 with a masterpiece honor gentle warmth, thereby giving honor and pride to the city and its residents. May I request Councilor Pasqual? So, therefore, Councilor Gerli Balaba be recognized.
Councilor Gerli Balaba is recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I move for the approval of proposed resolution number 2023-483.
Any second? Objection? None? Resolution number 2023-483 is hereby approved. Is Mr. Arauaro here? So, majority floor leader, you can go ahead.
Okay. Move to approve on second and final reading?
Any second? Seconded, approved.
Number five. Proposal solution number 2023-484, expressing the city's desire and interest to forge a sister-city relation or twinning agreement with the city of Davao with the end in view of promoting mutual understanding and goodwill as well as technical exchange and cooperation on the various dimensions of local governance, thereby assuring their constituents peace and prosperity. May I request Councilor Josette Magtahas Daba be recognized? May I request? Aimy Moreno?
Councilor Aimy Moreno is recognized.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I move to approve proposed resolution number 2023-484.
Any second? Any objection? None? Approved.
Move to approve on second and final reading?
Second? Seconded, approved.
Number six. Proposal ordinance number 2023-277, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy, representing the city government of Cagayan Oro, to enter into and sign an memorandum of agreement, MWA, with the Department of Agriculture, Bureau of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources, Regional Field Office number 10, B Far 10, represented by its Regional Director Edward B. Yasay, covering the implementation of the Fisheries Livelihood Project under the Imalinis at Masaganang Karagatan under the terms and conditions stipulated herein. May I request Councilor Christian Rustico M. Atas be recognized?
Councilor Christian Atas is recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Move for its approval, the proposed ordinance number 2023-277.
Second? Seconded, any objection? None? Approved.
Move to approve on second and final reading?
Second? Seconded, approved.
Number seven. Proposal ordinance number 2023-278, authorizing the city accountant to charge the sum of 37,000 from the item special program project Salamat Paalam Retirement Gift Incentive Prize Program in the 2023 annual budget of the Human Resource Management Office, the city, to cover the payment of the claim for retirement gift incentive of the late Mr. Willy O. Igal, former Watson II City Engineering Office, the city, who died last July 18, 2022 with 37 years of government service. May I request Councilor Yan Lam Lim to be recognized?
Councilor Alan Lim is recognized.
I move to approve proposed ordinance number 2023-278.
Any second? Objection? None? Approved.
Move to approve on second and final reading?
Second? Seconded, approved.
Number eight. Proposal ordinance number 2023-279, authorizing the city accountant to charge the sum of 14,655 pesos from the item maintenance and other operating expenses, traveling expenses, free third quarter in the 2023 annual budget of the Job Placement Bureau, Public Employment Service Office, the city, to cover payment of the reimbursement expenses incurred by Miss Kathleen Kate Disorelia, peso manager during her travel to Manila to attend the 2022 fourth quarterly meeting and year-end performance assessment between the Bureau of Local Employment and Peso Managers Association of the Philippines, Inc., held last December 4 to 7, 2022. Association of the Philippines, Inc., held last December 4 to 7, 2022. May I request Councilor Gerli Balaba be recognized?
Councilor Gerli Balaba is recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023-279.
Second. Seconded, any objection? None, approved.
Move to approve on second, final reading.
Any second, seconded, approved.
Number nine, proposed ordinance number 2023-80, approving the simple subdivision plan of block 20, block 11, LRC PSD -25027 with an area of 272 square meters containing two lots located in barangay Nasart, the city, as applied for by Ms. Minisita Pakuribot, represented by Mr. Carlos P. Chavez, subject to the conditions imposed by the city housing board, city engineers' office, and the city housing and urban development department, all of the city. I move for the approval of this ordinance.
Any second? Objection? None. Approved.
Move to approve on second, final reading.
Second. Seconded, approved.
We have three inclusions, Mr. Chairman. May I move for the inclusion of items 10, 11, and 12?
Move for inclusion, any second? Seconded, approved.
Number 10, proposed resolution number 2023-485, declaring there enlisted 18 core events and parallel activities as the official Higala Festival activities of the city of Cagenduro, subject to styling. The purpose of this, for the understanding of the members of the City Council, this is needed in order to avoid payment of the amusement tax because if you're not listed as one of the official activities of the fiesta, then the sponsors, the sponsoring team or group will be paying the city government the amusement tax. It depends, 5% or 30%. So, there are personalities who like to request for exemption. That is why we have to approve this. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Any second?
All members present are movements of this proposal. And jointly move and jointly seconded.
So, any second? Seconded, any? So, all are movements. So, it's hereby approved.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Seconded, approved.
Number 11, proposed solution 2023-486.
Before we proceed, Mr. Chairman, may I, after the approval, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Presiding Officer. It has been already a practice to consider this type of proposal or measure that would enhance our relationship with the private sector, especially those who are supporting the government's programs. Not necessarily the fiesta celebration because it would connote to religious activity, but our program that are in connection with the enhancement of the capacity of the city government as well as its people. But let us take note that there are channels. In other words, under the local government code, there is one machinery that has been created to evaluate. It's not the Fiesta Committee. So, let it be for the record that what we are trying, what we have considered is also for this machinery to work and to assess whether or not it would apply to them, but never the Fiesta Committee. So, may I put that on record so that not only for transparency, but for so that the action of the council would be within the framework of the legal requirement. Thank you.
So, let the comment of Councilor Nakaya be part of the records of the proceeding.
So, let the manifestation of the Honorable Iron Mark Nakaya be incorporated on record.
So...
Let's proceed.
Move to approve, second. Move to approve on second and final reading.
Seconded, seconded, approved.
Number 11, proposed solution number 2023-486, commending the Taekwondo jeans of the Taekwondo main gym, Cagenduro City, who won medals in the 8th Dayjun MBC Cup International Open Taekwondo Championship held in Chungnam, South Korea last August 11 to 16, 2023. Jointly move and jointly seconded. Everybody will be the author.
So, it's hereby approved. Simple recommendation.
Move to approve on second, final reading.
Seconded, seconded, approved.
Number 12, last item, proposed solution number 2023-487, suspending the next suspending the next regular session of this council on August 29, 2023 in deference to the observance and celebration of the feast of Saint Augustine and the National Heroes Day. I think this jointly move and jointly seconded.
Any second? Any objection? No objection? There being none?
He will object to the objection.
It's hereby approved.
Move to approve on second, final reading.
Seconded, approved.
There being other matters to take up, Mr. Chairman, I move for the adjournment.
Move, seconded, meeting adjourned.